All right, it's a little after, so we'll go ahead and start. Give everybody time. This is a meeting of the Lincoln County Commission, a public, a public meeting on November 7th, 2019. The members present are Darrell Baker, County Clerk, Phoebe Harless, Josh Dowers, and Commissioner Vance, couldn't be here. The purpose of this meeting is to review our wrecker policy. And we made copies, I don't know if everybody got a draft. They're laying around the table if you want to, if you didn't get one, to look at. So what, we have our 911 director here with us, hiding back and back. So what we're going to do is let you all look at it, and we want your input on it. And then, you know, we can make changes, we can talk about it, and then we'll, you know, before we get it implemented. Okay, did everybody sign in? Okay, we've got three people that have signed in to speak. Mr. Markham?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, do you want, you can just come up wherever you want.
Where do I?
Just right there is fine, wherever.
First of all, I thank you for the opportunity to be here. My name's Bobby Markham, and I served near Chattingale area. And anyways, I've been notified that you guys are having a meeting tonight, and that it would be possible to be part of the 911 rotation. And a lot of people in the fire department on that side of the line will let, I guess from 37 back is what we would be, you know, be interested in trying to help you service that area. It's about 22 miles where it is from 37, where we're at, and we would be able to help in that area. Some of the fire departments in that area said it's taken quite a long time, I guess, for tow trucks to get there. And that's how we knew about the problem that you guys were having on that side. And if we could help, we would want to do that if we can. So that's basically why I'm here. I've been asked by the director, I guess, to bring a copy of my Public Service Commission paperwork, law trucks we have. And we do run a 24-hour towing service, been in business about, probably around 10 years, and enjoy doing what we're doing and helping people, so. And I don't know if I could give you, I guess, the paperwork for the Public Service Commission.
All right, not talked to you until yesterday, but I want to make sure that, you know, if they do decide to add to the list, then I need this information, so. All right, thank you.
Well, your document says any, any towing service that is near or close to Logan County line, so that would make us available according to your Paragraph B of your, I guess, your policies.
This is just the draft policy that we put together. That's what we're doing, is just getting input on the policy before we vote on.
And if I can, I'll just, and I'm going to do this to everybody that comes up here. Has everybody had a chance to at least look at the draft that was passed out? Does everybody not have a copy? Because I mean, I'm, I'm just going to ask of everybody that wants to speak. Do you see anything in here that, that, that you recommend to be changed? Because like I said, that, that's the purpose of tonight, is to take this draft and take the input and then make a decision on it at a later, you know, tonight or the next meeting.
I guess you just have to look at what issues that you're having, and whatever issues you have, and try to create the policy that fixes that problem. I'm not familiar, but I know the rotation regulations we have are a lot more extensive than this. And they have requirements of trucks, you've got to have a certain amount of trucks, you have to be in 24-hour service, you have to be by, you have to have somebody to band the phones at all times, you have to be prompt, you have to be, you have to be there at a certain amount of time. And they also regulate and time us when we get there, you know, with the time we get the call, the time we get there. And so all of that stuff is a requirement, you know, for, for the Logan County 911 rotation. I could get you a copy of that, if you wanted their, their regulations, because they give it to all the people that's in Logan too, so.
I think it's also in there, you have to be in business a year.
Yes, yes, you have to be in business a year, and like I said, you have to keep all your insurance and your public service papers and all that have to, you know, be kept up.
And that is kept within 911 Center, isn't it?
Yes, it is. Copy of the insurance and all that stuff, and it's all kept, you know, through the 911.
I'm sorry, Josh, can I cut along?
No, no, you could, no, and I, and I want to be clear too, you're talking about having issues. The purpose of this is I don't think anybody on the commission thinks we have any issues with the way it's currently set up. This is all about developing a policy that, quite frankly, isn't, isn't, now fully in character. So we think the service we have right now is pretty above standard, but we want to develop solid policies for that, so. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Okay, Kyle, you're next. You know, you're good? Then we have James Oldaker.
Thank you. The president just walked in.
Go right in.
We, we looked at the draft Tuesday night in our county fire association meeting, and what we, what we have a concern with, and what we voted to recommend, was language to the effect that if someone's going to be placed in the rotation, whoever, that they have the equipment that is going to be necessary to handle any of the incidents that we look at up, such as having a conventional wrecker, conventional type wrecker, and rollbacks available instead of just one or the other. That's, our concern was that, we, never fails, was that, that on our side and from our perspective, time is pretty critical. A wrecker dispatched out that has a vehicle over a mountain or something, that's going to require a conventional type wrecker to get it out of there, and we end up getting a rollback because that connects in rotation. Be careful, guys. The adds, adds a delay. It turns a two-hour call into a four-hour call, and we can get down into $14 an hour on worker comp calculations and all that. But the time is the, is the critical thing. It's time that the roads shut down, time that traffic's diverted or stopped. It just, we feel like there needs to be certain minimum, you know, equipment that's needed, and they need to be able to handle whatever comes up. And we're not sure that that's the case, you know, right now with what's being proposed.
So if I'm hearing you, the, on the second page of the draft?
Yes.
I guess it would be 2B, where it, I guess, I guess it would come in.
It was a little gray. We questioned that of Alan Tuesday night. Does that mean that they, you know, specifically need to have, or is that based on their opinion of what they need?
Sure, sure.
You know, we're looking at, you know, a rollback alone just won't do it. I'm not against people coming into business and going in and making money, but, you know, the thing is, is we have, we have a vested interest in it as well, and we, we want, we would like to see whoever is in the rotation and sent is able to handle it. Pretty much, it's pretty well standard across the board. We relay in when, when we get there and tell them what they're going to need. They're going to need a conventional and a rollback, or two rollbacks, or whatever, just to minimize the downtime while law enforcement's on the way. We let them know they, they deal with it, have it called, and it's taken care of, but we don't know. And that was, we felt like it needed to be something in there as, as far as a minimum list of equipment. We spouted it off the other night, but I don't know if it got noted down to give to you or not, but at the minimum rollback and conventional though. Thank you.
Bobby, did you sign in?
Yes. I just want to, to make the comment, it's all right to have multiple pieces of equipment and stuff, but not every wrecker requires a 60-ton hooker truck, which we don't have in the county. Very few rollbacks in the county, very few hooker trucks in the county. We were just wanting into the rotation to offer more services to the people in our area, faster dispatch out to car wrecks and stuff like that. The fire department should know that the type of equipment you need, whether it be a rotator wrecker truck, 60-ton, or they might guess they might need a regular conventional truck. And I have no problem with those being dispatched, I have a rollback wrecker truck. So I have no problem with Kyle or anyone else running a hooker truck into those situations. I have no problem with that. But as far as having a minimum equipment list, then say in a conventional truck, then you're going to have to say, well, we've got to be able to handle semis too, because we've got semis on the road. And I know that Kyle's truck's not big enough to handle a semi for a wrecker service, so, you know, you can't just draw a line and say you've got to have two small pieces of equipment, one hooker truck and one rollback. The newer vehicles, just about all your little SUVs have to go on a rollback. Most of your pickups go on rollbacks nowadays. Anything that's wrecked in the road will usually go on a rollback truck. If it goes over the mountain, then yes, you may need a conventional wrecker. Very well, we'll need a conventional wrecker. So, you know, I'm just asking for, uh, equal opportunity to serve those. Thank you.
All right, Alan, do you have anything you want to add before we, I don't think anybody else has signed up to speak?
Not really. I just, I relayed that information that came from the association to you all by email, and left it at that. My, my biggest concern is, and we are getting ready to install a new computer system in the dispatch center, and the wrecker rotation log is part of the way we set up that software. And we will be contacting all of the existing services in the next few weeks, asking for specifics. How many, how many rollbacks you have, how many traditional wrecks you have, how many heavy-duty wrecks you have? And please, in no way, this has absolutely nothing to do with this policy or tonight. We just have to have that information as part of the new computer system that we're adding. So if we call you, don't think that we're trying to find information out for this reason. We're trying to find that out for the requirements of the new computer system that we are putting in the dispatch center.
No, I mean, I just, I guess I would just open it up to anybody that's here that's, that's looked at the draft. And again, this is just a draft, and we don't have an existing policy, this is what this is for, try and develop one. So if you've had a chance to look at it, I mean, now's the time to, if you have any suggestions, if you have any ideas as to what we might add or take out, or anything like that.
I've got a question. How much business do we do in Lincoln County through the 911 Center with the wrecks? That Lincoln County needs four wrecker services.
I think, if I'm not mistaken, Alan, back at the end of September, I think Alan ran a, a list of the log.
I ran you the list for the whole year.
Right, and I think, and they'll quote me on this, but I think from January 1 until the end of September, there was roughly 130, 140 calls from the 911 dispatch countywide. And I think the breakup was with the two services with, with y'all and with Robbie's. I think Robbie's got about 100 of the calls, and I think you guys got about 35 or 40. So that was for 75% of the year, so.
So if you're trying to lead a family, and you're going to bring in, we're going to have four wrecker services, right?
Well, we don't.
Is that what you're saying?
I mean, we don't.
And you're going to put us on rotation?
Well, we've not put anybody on rotation.
I said, if you're going to put them on rotation. How's anybody going to survive? I mean, God forbid if there's any wrecks. I don't, I don't want that. But no, you know, no more wrecks than we've got. I don't know how anybody can survive, just that alone.
And then you're just having, like Scotty, he keeps bringing my name up, you know, you've got Robbie's in Lincoln County, you know? I mean, he keeps bringing my name up. You know, I've got three trucks I've got to work. You know, and I've got to have three trucks I've got to work.
You've got to pay.
You know, I've got, I do business, you know, and it's slow. You know, it goes times that I don't hardly do nothing. And it's a lot different now than it was 15 years ago. You don't have the business like you do here because all the coal mines shut down around the home. And then you, then you're going to turn around and do all this, and then if you're going to put it on rotation, I'm just going to tell you now, I thought they ain't going to fool with it. Because it ain't worth my time.
Right now, it doesn't say rotation at all on here. It just says, you're going to choose, which is kind of iffy too.
I mean, if that's the case, I'll just go ahead and get selling all of my trucks, and I'll just keep me one, and I'll just do it two. It'd be a lot cheaper for me in the long run.
Right, and I, and we're not, like I said, we're not approving tonight, we're not approving anybody to go on the rotation tonight. We're just approving this policy.
I was, I thought that's what we were fearing for.
This isn't, this isn't to approve anybody to get on the rotation. This is to, this is to hammer out what a rotation might look like.
The, under Policy 3, it doesn't specifically say rotation. It says that 911 will choose, doesn't say how they're going to choose it by rotation. I'm, I'm just thinking in, in writing, it's better to have it in writing than to just say, oh, we're going to choose, because then it gets like kind of political, and just choosing however you want to, or whatever. It makes it more fair and equitable, as the policy said.
Like Campbell County, have they, if you work, that if you want to get on the wrecker rotation down there, you have to develop an application and a board, or is it Campbell County? It is Campbell County. Campbell County, and they review, this board reviews it. And then the board decides, I guess, where you are, if you have your stuff, if they're native in that district, whatever. Then they, the board submits to the commission to base the on the recommendation. The commission just doesn't put anybody on there unless there's board, a president, it's like some of them in the 911 Center, law enforcement. I think they have someone from the fire. Different entities are on the boards, and the board setup is specific. I mean, different counties do it.
Which could get political.
Well, yeah.
Because there could be picking, piggets.
Well, like they might say, the sheriff's on the board.
Right.
You know, and the 911 director.
Right.
Well, Alan, do you not, right now, is it not kind of decided by territory, by?
That's correct.
Geographical, where the wrecks at?
It goes back to the last time we addressed this. At the time it was addressed, there were numerous wrecker services in that county. Brumfields existed, they went out of business. Rick's wrecker here in Hamlin existed and went out of business. I think Dinges wrecker existed and went out of business. So if that gives you any indication, and then the two that remain, Robbie's and Breedlove's. So the area was divided up at that time by the commission, and then once those services went out of business, they kind of assumed the territories based upon, you know, where they had trucks. So fire area 17, 100, 200, and 300, that's Allen Creek, Morrisville, Duvalk, and Mud River are served by Breedlove's. Everything in Hamlin, West Hamlin, Guyan River, and Harts is served by Robbie's. So we, we tried to keep it consistent with the fire districts because, you know, as a, when you're in a dispatch center and you're trying to figure out whose territory it is, it was a whole lot easier to keep it consistent with boundaries that already existed versus creating some kind of arbitrary boundary that was different just for the wrecks.
Has that been going smoothly? I think this was last addressed in 2008, if I'm not mistaken. Was it, I mean, do you have?
We hadn't had any major concerns, and I, the whole reason that we're here is because of the two new wrecker services that exist. And I know Mr. Saul, you're here, and is Mr. Harper here?
No.
Okay. Well, I will say that Mr. Harper was also notified by mail, given the same notice that everybody else got. And it wasn't until they started asking to be put on a rotation that we, that we went back and addressed this, so.
But I think this is something moving forward, this, once we get this policy implemented, whatever we come up with. Every three years, we need to review it. Correct? It's just a review, it should be being reviewed every three years. In my mind, this policy and the rotation are kind of two separate things. Right, Alan? I mean, that's kind of.
I think it's, I think it can be, and the policy gets reviewed every three years, and in that policy you state what constitutes someone meeting the qualifications in this county. I talked to Robbie today, where are you?
Right.
All right, I couldn't see you back, you slipped in.
I slipped in.
Reiterate what you told me on the phone today, what you felt, your, your thoughts were on, on that anybody that went into the wrecker service business ought at least have a fence down, impound yard.
Well, that's, that's a requirement, you know.
It's a requirement. You have to have an impound area to the state place, you have to have all this.
I mean, you know, it is now, I don't know what it was back in the day.
And I think Breedlove's was exempted from that as a guideline because they were grandfathered. They, they've been in business since, since we were all in grade school, at least.
How old are you? 55.
55? Okay. So, yeah, a long time ago. So they were exempted from that guideline, but we need to make sure that whatever the guidelines are, and whatever the qualifications are, that they're laid out in this policy so whoever you do add to or take away off that rotation falls within those guidelines. And I, I will say that if anybody's frustrated with this county commission, just, just go down to Logan County, or half a dozen other counties, Bingo County, and you will find out that the policies down there are far stricter than any of you would like. It was very, very, very strict, some of these policies on the requirements, and I think you had to be there within 30 minutes on 95% of the calls, and if you weren't there, you could be pulled off the rotation and for 30 days or 60 days. And if you scanned or jumped, you could be called in and 30 or 60 days pulled off the list. I mean, the penalties, the guidelines, the, the requirements that, that are in this policy are very reasonable and pretty simple. And it does need to be, have some fine tuning and some tweaking, but at the same time, it's nothing by comparison with what the other counties around us are, are, are doing.
Yeah, that's very lenient, Peter.
Do you think we should get a little more into this on what we did in this original? Or are you comfortable with this, or should we be more specific about it?
Well, keep it simple. I, I think the more complicated you make it, the more problems maybe later, but the Fireman's Association has a recommendation. You know, I think though, that you want to make sure that it doesn't burden the commission or burden the fire departments later, because like, like they said, they're out there on their own time. And if you have to wait two hours for a wrecker service to get there, and I think there was some discussion that we were wanting to include these two new wrecker services in a countywide rotation, and I don't think that was ever the intent. I don't think anybody ever intended to send Saul's wrecker to the head of Harts Creek, or, or Robbie's wrecker to the head of Allen Creek. I think the territories that we have geographically work well, and I don't think we should try to alter that for the sake of, nobody wants to be out on a fire call in the middle, I'd like to begin with, and let alone you don't need to be waiting for resources coming from the other side of the county. So there does need to be some territorial boundaries for everybody's sake.
But under the policy part, I've looked at different counties' policy, under, obviously 3. It's pretty standard to punt, the owner of the vehicle has first, it's number one, the owner's request. I mean, that's pretty standard.
But we also have to take this one thing into consideration. And Morrisville, I think it was that brought this up at the meeting the other night, if the owner gets there and the owner wrecks their vehicle, and they're traveling by old quarter G, for instance, and they happen to be from Bingo County, and they say, well, I want Bingo Wrecker Central 1, if they call for something outside our immediate area, we need to be able to have the provisions to say, no, we're not going to call a wrecker that's two hours away, and our firemen and our policemen wait there while that wrecker comes from an extended location. We have to make sure that the owner's request is within reason, and the owner's request is for a wrecker service at least local to us.
Does that happen often?
See, we've got to deal with, well, Alan knows this part of it too. Some of ours winds up Roger Green. So the time I get somebody out of bed and get down where we're at, you're looking at another air or so.
And where's Roger Green, then?
Up 17, yeah. So the way I got it figured, the law enforcement's only going to get paid.
Are you understanding that, or are you?
And, and this policy only affects wrecks called by the Lincoln County 911 Center. We don't stipulate, nor do we tell the state police how to run their day-to-day operations. They have seven dispatch centers in the state. If they go through their dispatch center, then they can call whoever they want to. If they ask us to call the wrecker, which tends to be happening more and more, then they fall under this policy.
That's the way it is.
The old policy was that if a call went through 911, if an officer called 911, get a wrecker, it had to be a wrecker in the county. Is that right, Alan?
Or that was on the rotation, is that?
No. I, I think it, I think it did say that it had to be somebody in the county.
In the county.
Because the, the territory, the territorial boundary did come up on where is Breedlove's? Which county is Breedlove's in? And it was very clear, if you look at any state map or county map, whether they pay taxes here, whether they pay taxes there is not the issue. But their business resides in the corporate limits of this county, according to the USGS Census Act. That's what we got to follow.
But what?
So that was, that was discussed at the time, because there was even discussion about Abbott's and some of the others. You're absolutely right.
Yeah, because they consider Breedlove in the county.
Yes, that decision was made that.
They didn't want to call like Abbott's, or Paul's out in Marburgville, or someplace like that. Now, if the car was out on the road, wasn't obstructing any traffic, then they would let them call somebody else. But if it was sitting on the highway, they had to get the highway open. They couldn't let a car sit there for an hour, hour and a half while.
Does that happen in the?
See, we got done that way here a couple of years ago. We had to wait, before we was at on Buck River Mountain, which Kyle could have been there in five minutes, then the trooper piled up the rocks, and they was already out on the county.
Do you know why that was?
I have not a clue, other than the trooper took off and there we was sitting with cars.
They wanted them vehicles locked up inside storage, not still inside storage, and Robbie's not collecting a penny off of them. Y'all lose.
That one there, it didn't need to be locked up because the lady was on her way to work. There was nothing wrong with it than that.
You're talking about something else. I want, I want to go back to one thing you said, Mitty, Jim, about the specifics of what was kind of gray, what, what was being proposed here. I've got Logan County's policy here that, I mean, is, 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 is more specific.
That one there, it didn't need to be locked up because the lady was on her way to work. There wasn't nothing wrong, other than that.
Alan, I think that's rough to do. You're talking about something else, man.
I want, I wanna go back to one thing you said, maybe a Jim, about the specifics of what was kind of gray, what, what was being proposed here. I've got Logan County's policy here that, I mean, is, 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 is more specific. You know, I, I would just ask if, if you think it would be sufficient, if the fire association thinks it would be sufficient. It says to be eligible to be placed on the county wrecker rotation, the wrecker company must have both a rollback wrecker, at least 8,000-pound bed, and a hook wrecker, at least an eighth-ton, but. Do you think, I mean, in your guesstimation, do you, do you think that would be sufficient for the association's concern?
Well, I think that's what they mentioned the other night was, didn't, was poundage, but, you know, weight grading, but a conventional and a rollback. You know, it's, you know, I, I meant, I had to deal with it maybe a little bit more often than some of the others out on the corner. But the, we get them hanging over the side all the time, we get them down over the hill, we get them, you know. At other times, rollbacks do good a lot of times, but there are those that every now and then. But we have to have a, there has to be a hook.
I mean, to me, it's a legitimate safety concern that, that you're bringing up. And it's, maybe we should be more specific in what's in there, so I just, I just want to.
Just the variety of services, I mean, what does that mean, you know? It leaves it up to.
This is vague, is what you mean.
I'm just trying to make it work, we're gonna have a 60-ton wrecker, too. If you're gonna make it, if you're gonna make it, make it rough, just go ahead and make it where you're gonna have a 60-ton rotator truck. And let's just go ahead and make you have traffic cones with a special truck. And just make it so difficult, none of us can operate. What I'm saying is, the fire department should know if you need a conventional-type wrecker or a rollback. A conventional type, if you've got SUV, you've got to take them up, put them on dollys. You can't just run them up on the back of that rollback. So there's a whole, you, you gotta look at your situations that you're involved in. If it's over the mountain, then you're not blocking the road. So it's not a real, real fast priority thing as far as blocking the road. But it is a high priority getting it out, because the fire members are out there all night protecting this or whatever. You know, safety is on the mix, actually. So, you know, I, I think that the chiefs of the fire departments know what type of weapon they need.
Well, there were the calls being placed. Yeah, there were some provisions put in to where we could do that. But by the way that that draft is written now, it would be rotated and, yeah.
They'd have to skip some businesses, is what you mean.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we, we don't have the, you know, that policy didn't allow for that. It just allowed for, for them to be rotated within their groups. It didn't, didn't mention anything about us being able to say, hey, we need a conventional, this, you know, X and Y don't have a conventional, so we're gonna have to go to Z. You know, and maybe that's a way to handle it. I, I don't know, but there again, I got guys that can't operate a bone coffee maker, let alone them making that right decision, so.
Well, thank you all for coming out and giving us your input, and we'll take this into consideration. And I'm excited we're gonna have to work on this, just to type it in, Alan.
Write your notes, and I'll type it in here. I've made some changes here based upon what they said, so. I'm gonna add the section three there that the rotate, that if the 911 Center makes a call, it would be based upon the county rotation list, because it doesn't specifically say that. It just says they'll call somebody. And then, do you want me to add the provision off the Logan County policy, using those?
I, I think, I think it's something for us to discuss, yeah. I mean, at least, I mean, fire association here, I respect every one of them, and I respect their decision, and I respect their opinion on safety. And so I think that that, I think that would be at least something for the commission to consider.
The rotation part gonna start, though, with just the owner.
First thing's gonna happen is, if the owner asks for you by name, or you, or anybody else, then that's who we'll call. We'll maintain your list, your number in there, we'll, we'll do that, whoever they ask for. And then, if they don't ask for something, and the fireman or the policeman says, well, I want this particular wrecker service because they can lock up a vehicle, or they have a specialized piece of equipment, or they can do something that I know the other guys can't, and that's gonna be the second. And then the third fallback, if the owner has no request, and the person on the scene has no request, the third fallback will go back to that rotation list.
Or an emergency, where the person on the scene can't tell you.
That's correct. Nine times out, yeah, we may have, I don't know how many fatalities we have a year, but we don't have tremendous, we may have five or six wrecker calls a year that the person on the scene cannot make that preference. And I think that's what I'm going, want to instruct my people to do, is stay out of the middle of this, call whoever the person that owns that vehicle wants.
Then number two, if the person, number two, is contacted, is requested by the on-scene agent, then it's the rotation.
On-scene agent, is that, is, is that law enforcement or?
Any public, I think there's a definition above it, and if it's any public safety agent that's there. Fire Police CMS, emergency management. Generally, the wrecker services are called or approved or authorized by police. But law enforcement prefers to know what they're gonna need. So the fire department will say, I need two wrecks, and they'll tell law enforcement, and law enforcement will say, go ahead and call them. And they do that to try to speed things up, because most of the time, with limited law enforcement in the county, the fire departments are the first ones there.
And they know how bad it is.
That's correct.
So, so people with, the, the services that would have a conventional would probably still gonna get more calls than somebody that would have a rollback, just on a whole.
No.
That's what I'm hearing, if that, if it wards, if it wards one being called, that's what I'm hearing.
You'll roll, you'll run more rollback calls than you will.
Well, I understand, I understand that. But, but I'm talking about, pre, pre-rotation, pre-rotation, that conventional's probably gonna be called more than a rollback, pre-rotation. Because, because fire department's gonna get on the scene, and they're gonna say, we need a conventional wrecker, if they see it over the hill.
It's over the hill.
Right. So that means it'll get called.
Over the hill.
It's a possibility that they could get more calls.
It seems like a lot of this is just common sense that you all do every day on the scene, that has been one on for 11 years and nobody's talked about.
You do it anyway.
All right, well, thanks for everybody coming out on this rainy night. We usually have a public hearing and Sean comes. So it's nice to have input. Okay, so we're going to adjourn then till 6:00, our regular meeting.